Hello, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to a special edition of Dion's Daily Dose. Today is Tuesday, August 10th, 2021. And today, we're going to be interviewing someone I know pretty darn well. My wife, Elizabeth Bergeron, and she is actually going to be running for county commissioner. She is not running for governor, although I think she should. Just kidding. Let's let her get her feet wet a little bit with the county and maybe get maybe get a feel for how things work. But anyway, look, she's running for La Porte County Commissioner. We're gonna let her dive in and talk about what that is. But in, in general, the county commissioners are the executive branch. They're the, on the county level, they're like the governor, right? The council and stuff like that is the legislative branch. They, they take care of the budget, but the commissioners are the ones who kind of are the executive level decision making, like the mayor of a town, right? But it's a shared thing. So I'm going to be bringing her on and we're gonna, we're actually doing this like, Jack, hey, thanks for joining us, man. Oh yeah, I got you, man. Yeah, just for, for those of you out there, Eric is actually doing a Guinness Book of World Records attempt. I thought it was a different day. I know he got kind of messed up, so go check him out, man. Hopefully he does it. I wish you the best of luck, Eric. And you guys can catch up on this later if you can't watch live. Send me, send me any questions you may have for her. But here we are. She's in her office. Remember like this room used to be her office, but I kind of took it over when I started doing live streams. So she took the other room and made it her office. So we're gonna do this the, the actual way. So without further ado, my wife, Elizabeth Liz Bergeron, there she is.
Hi.
Hi Liz.
Hey.
All right, so since we're gonna be
I'm not running for governor.
So let's, let's start at the top. First of all, what does the county commissioner do?
Well, like you said, is the executive branch. It is like the mayor of a town, except it's the mayor of the county and there's three of them. They do various things. They can, you know, regulate and create regulations for elections. If it's an unincorporated area, they can kind of step in where there is no leadership. They are the executive power. So they give the county council in an order, hey, create a budget for sidewalks. And the county council has to do that. They can do things like administer sick pay raises. They're involved in employments. How much does a county employee get paid? Are we gonna create any hiring instructions? Pretty much just oversee the county.
Okay, all right, awesome. Um, first of all, since you're running, I assume that means that you're unhappy with the current leadership.
That's accurate. That's accurate.
Yeah, we won't dive too much into that yet. Um, let's start with, in your own words, why are you running for this position?
Well, I've been in La Porte County for almost 18 years. Next month will be 18 years, I believe. I came here from Lake County to work. And in Lake County, you kind of forget that there's anything outside of Lake County. And I've been here for 18 years, but just caught up in the everyday life. Raising kids, getting married, maintaining a husband, working. And I kind of just, you just forget about, you hear about the presidential elections and the governor, but you just kind of forget about local. And then you start to think, I could never do it. You know, I'm, I'm not CEO material, so I can never, I can never run for office. I can never do it. I can never afford it. And that's kind of where I was, you know, life had me busy, so I just didn't really think about it. Until last election cycle. Part of it, you know, being the wife of a candidate, but part of it is just paying attention. Watching the Joe Haney race really got me involved and what do commissioners do? What are they? And how important is what I call micro, micro politics? Politics on your local level affects your state level and the state level is more important than the federal. I started paying attention and started watching meetings online. I think a lot of us did when we went inward for COVID, we started paying attention more. And I was, I mean, I come from Lake County and your stories about Lake County politics. And I felt like this was, Lake County had nothing on this. And I'm watching elected officials forget that they're elected. Forget that they work for us. They work for me. They work for you. And it just, it got me so mad. And then you start seeing bullying and non-transparency and what's done in the dark. Is it gonna come to light? And I can't stand bullies and I can't stand the residents of the county being treated like they don't matter. So there's a position open, a spot open, and I'm going for it. And I'm on a quest right now in the pre-primary time to learn as much as I can about the county and its people and its charities and its businesses and just learn as much as I can about my neighbors and my home.
Okay, all right, good. Um, did you, you said, you know, obviously being, you know, the wife of a candidate, you learned a lot about running. Um, did you like realize that it's not quite the insurmountable task that everyone makes it out to be to put your name on the ballot?
I did. I learned, I also learned that there's more expenses than people realize. There's more involved.
It's very, very
It really is, for those who aren't entrenched, it really is a lot of groundwork, a lot of grassroots, a lot of door knocking. But it's not, it, it can be, if it's done wrong, it can be this pay to play and you're not one of us. But I haven't encountered that since you've been running in La Porte County. I haven't encountered a party that was like, you're not rich enough. You don't own the business you work for, pay out.
Right.
So I found out that it was, it's politics. So it's its own world. It's its own microcosm, but it's easier to get involved. It's easier to get involved than a lot of people think. And there's a lot of different ways to get involved. Like I remember saying when you were running, if you can't donate money, because you ran during COVID, which was fun.
Oh yeah.
If you can't, if you can't donate to the campaign, donate your voice.
Right.
Donate your back, wear a shirt, donate your yard, put up a sign. And a lot of that means more than a dollar spent. You know, having got local support means a lot, a lot more than we realize.
Oh yeah, absolutely. And that's, that's something that I was, I was gonna touch on later is there are, there are a lot of assumptions that people make about running for office. And look, let's, let's be honest, it does cost money. However, it doesn't need to cost everything you have. You know, you're gonna need to put a little bit of money into it, get some shirts made, get some stuff made. But that's what these committees are for. These committees are here so that people can donate. And those who can't donate can still help. And we'll, we'll get to how they can help. Um, but let's, let's kind of review who you are. You've been on my, you've been on my streams before, but a lot of people that are gonna see this may be seeing you for the first time. They may not know who you are. So obviously, you're an, you're an amazing mother. You're an incredible wife. Um, so what, other than that, is Liz? Who are you?
Who am I? I am a third and fourth generation American. My family's came from Germany, Ireland, and Eastern Europe. Where in Eastern Europe is depending on how the maps were drawn in, the year of your birth. But we're talking Croatia, Slovenia, that area. So my great grandparents came over. My grandparents were born here. I think on my dad's side, my great grandparents were born here and their parents came over. I was in the family trade, just to make sure I don't misrepresent anything. I come from a family of union workers, tradesmen. During the depression, my great grandfather actually traveled around and did work and didn't see his family for years to make sure they had what they needed to survive. My parents raised me in Munster, in a wonderful little world. If anyone knows Munster, they know what Independence Park is. It is a park that was created for housing for GIs, the heavy GI building. To come and have their own little piece of the American dream. And every street is labeled Bunker Hill, Revere, everything related to the Revolutionary War. Lived across the street from a place called Little Store. And if you come to Munster, you already know what I'm talking about. But I grew up in a subdivision, a little area uniquely itself. The, sometimes it would be referred to as the poor area of Munster because there was aluminum siding houses and just regular things. But we did things like the, it's been out for 81 years, the Kitty Parade on the Fourth of July. So I grew up with this instillment of how great our country is. My dad was a volunteer fireman, worked at the mill for 30 years. He likes to joke, it was supposed to be a summer job and then here I came. Um, left Munster, moved to, moved around in Lake County, in Porter County. I say that because um, sometimes there are some people that make a big deal about where you lived for how long before you come to La Porte County. So in 1980, I was a baby, so you know, I'm sure they were doing other things, but I wasn't.
Okay, you were, you know, you, you weren't born in La Porte County.
No.
You chose to make it your home, which I
I did. Yeah, I came here with a one-year-old in tow to work at Indiana State Prison. Something I never thought I would ever do or ever get. I was like, oh, this will be a six-month job. It turned out to be six years. And in that, I was a hostage negotiator for about two years. I worked a lot of different locations, one being the control room where you had to learn who your coworkers were and their normal, who they were, because if you heard them on the radio and they sounded off, you knew something was wrong. Um, after that, I, I held a multitude of, not a multitude. I had several jobs in several very different industries that give me the experience and the skills that I have that nobody else does.
Okay, so let's, let's talk about that. We got, you know, your, your kind of, your history. Let's talk about your professional history, right? You, you said you worked at Indiana State Prison. You were there for six years as a correctional officer. You worked the control room, which I'm still jealous of the air conditioner. It's one of the few places in the prison that had AC during the summer.
Well, the reason why being you had the armory literally next door. We don't want
It wasn't, yeah, it wasn't just because they were spoiled, although they are. Um, it was that the armory is right there. It has to be kept cool. Um, so ISP, you said you were on the hostage negotiation team. Uh, that's, that's a big deal. Um, after ISP, where did you go? What did you do after that? And how does that translate to being a good commissioner?
After ISP, I took some time off. It was 2008 and a lot of people took time off. Very hard to find a job. I remember hundreds and hundreds of applications.
Hundreds if not thousands of applications all over.
It was a lot. I ended up working at a local company called Indiana Paging Network. Very similar to ISP, but via paging network. Did that for three years and that was a, when you call your doctor and it's after hours, you get the answering service, that's what we did. I learned how to talk to people in their worst times and also in their just, hey, is the doctor here type of times. Um, worked nights because of my reliability. I was put on the midnight shift where you, there was no call off. You went to work. And I worked with a great group of people and it's a great company to work for. But three years goes by and it's time to expand, so.
Time to, you know, move into a little more stable, a little better paying career. There's, you know, that's what, that's what we do. That's what this country is about. Is, you know, securing a better future for yourself. I mean, three years is a long time to, to be at a job anymore. Especially one that you're not planning on making your, you know, your career forever. So after I Yeah, then what?
I graduated with my bachelor's degree in healthcare administration, long-term care. And it was time to put that degree to use. Um, you know, a small business, you can only move up so much. It's, it's time to, to move on. And I ended up for a year and only left because of the commute from Michigan City to Chicago was an hour and a half each way. It was very, very hard. It was something I thought I could handle. It couldn't. But I worked for a third-party administrator named Sedgwick. It's a Fortune 500 company and they handle work, they handle a multitude of things. I worked in the workers' compensation department where I did workers' compensation for other Fortune 500 companies. Advanced Auto, I was a backup Major League Baseball player, adjuster.
Backup Major League Baseball player?
I only got to do it one time and it's not as exciting as I thought it would be, but um.
I think you need to clarify, because you said you're a backup Major League Baseball player, so.
A backup adjuster for MLB.
Okay, so a backup adjuster for the Major League Baseball.
Right.
Okay.
Chick-fil-A, other companies. I was involved in a team for Mance Auto Parts where our team worked together and saved Advanced Auto Parts $1 million in lost claims. And by closing them and finding ultimate treatments and settling claims, our team saved a million dollars and we went on to contest and we actually did the most. So I learned, I learned a lot. I learned how to talk to people. If anyone's a worker, has been on workers' compensation, it's not a fun time. Um, it's not, you're not getting the calls of, you know, cars and rainbows. You're getting, why isn't my medical bills being paid? Why aren't I getting paid? Um, it's a very stressful, stressful, busy environment. I did love it. I just, I couldn't do the commute anymore. It was just too hard and I was missing time with my kids and my family. So I went to the schools and did, I was a para for about six months.
What's a para, for those who don't know?
A para is your teacher's assistant. They're the ones that help the teacher and help the class. So I would do anything that the, the main teacher was with, which was fifth grade. Anything that they wanted me to, whether it was make copies, whether it was help with remediation or advanced groups. Um, I helped third graders with reading. I, it was one of my most favorite jobs because I was happy every day I went to work and every day I came home. It was just fulfilling and it was great watching the kids succeed and accomplish things they didn't think they could do.
I, I remember that. I remember that you really, really enjoyed that, especially after Sedgwick. Because Sedgwick, uh, Sedgwick was a very draining experience. I mean, there was a lot of, there was obviously the commute to think about. So that's like three hours every day added on. And then of course, you get there, you're in a big city, uh, corporate environment and you're a little cubicle, you know, clack, clacking away and doing what you have to do. Um, let me interrupt you real quick. Uh, Maga Matt said if he lived in La Porte County, he would vote for you, but you do have his support and he wants to tell how to donate to the campaign. So let me, let me interject this real quick.
He's the financial guy right now.
Right, so right now, um, we are still working on getting online donations set up. Uh, that will be on her website as soon as it's set up. But if you want to donate, uh, check or cash, preferably check. Um, you can mail it to 1018 Providence Street. And what, what's the name of your committee?
It is, oh my gosh, Liz for LPCO. Let me double check, um, and then we can get with him after. I haven't even, donations are like not even in my mind right now, so.
Right, right.
I don't have it in my mind.
We'll get with you. I will put the link on the video for you. Um, right now, it's an exploratory committee. It's, uh, she can't even actually file the candidate, the official candidate paperwork until January, uh, which just so you know, she has every intention of doing. But the way that this, the way that it works, and it's kind of a little education thing out there for you. Um, when you declare your intent to run, you can, you establish your, what's called an exploratory committee. And what that committee does is it predates the actual election process. It allows you to start hosting events, start making, uh, uh, you know, T-shirts and, and stuff for your campaign. It handles the expenses for the campaign. It handles incoming donations. And the exploratory committee actually establishes what are the odds of this person getting elected? That's kind of the, the point of the exploratory committee is, is this person going to be a good candidate? Is, you know, do they have enough name recognition? Are they able to, to raise funds? Are they able to do this? Are they able to do that? Certain positions actually have minimums that you have to raise before you can actually even file candidacy paperwork. This isn't one of them.
Senator has, I think Senator is the one that has
Yeah, Senator, Governor, those all have specific requirements that you have to do. But we'll get you the, we'll get you that information, absolutely. Um, this is very early in the process, process. She actually just did her press release to let people know that she's running. But let's, let's get back to your, to your professional, um, your professional career here. Um, after, after para, then what?
I love para because something a lot of people don't know, and I didn't, is a para is not a guaranteed position from year to year. The school board has to approve a certain number of paras. And if your school population drops, then that number drops. You also do not qualify for unemployment when you're off on the summer. So not knowing that, but still loving my job, I said, what am I gonna do? I responded to a very interesting ad that ended up being a very, a position that I feel like I grew as a person in. And I feel like it grew us as a family in. And I ended up working for a company on South Bend that had a contract with Apple. Very important. I did not work for Apple. I worked for the company that had the contract for Apple.
Right, you were a contractor, a subcontractor that worked for Apple. You did not work directly for Apple, but you did work that was used by Apple.
Yes.
For what? Apple what?
Right. I worked for, and Apple is very secretive in what you do. They compartmentalize everything. You don't really know exactly what you're working on. You just know you're working on this. What we ended up finding out is we were working on improving the Apple Maps interface. Few years ago, when I was working there, and I worked there in 2015, there were mysterious vans that were freaking people out. Apple actually had to come out and say, this is what it is, because they were unlabeled and they had, similar to what the Google Map car has on the top, but they also had something called LiDAR on the sides, which is super cool. It, it can measure how far is the curb away from the street? How tall is that building? How far apart are the buildings? And LiDAR is used when you play video games and you look at a cityscape. They use that information to make that look realistic. And it was Apple Max. And I was in California, Chicago, and then I ended up staying in Detroit. Oh, and we did Cleveland, but I actually ended up going back to Detroit to lead an extension project to see basically how far can we push the equipment before it breaks.
Right, to interject real quick, you got, you got to experience in one way, um, how truck drivers are away from their family for weeks at a time. How long were you in Detroit for? I mean, you were there for months, weren't you?
Well, I made it a point to come home every few weeks. That, I, I could not even imagine not being, oh, not being home. So I would be gone for about four weeks, come home for a week. The company was great with their time. Um, they would tell you, you can leave as often as you want. You just may not go back to where you are. And Detroit, logistically, is a three-hour car drive. So they knew I was coming home to, to be with my family, so I just kept going back to Detroit. So I'd just hop in the car and drive and then come home and then go back. Um, I was in Detroit probably during the regular season, probably two, three months. And then Cleveland for the last month where I didn't come home and that was incredibly, incredibly hard. I have a hoodie right back there that I
I'm gonna point out your hoodie.
And a rose from, that is made from the map of Cleveland, just to remind myself that if I can get through that, I can get through anything. Because I would call Dion every day, like, is it, walking, going home? I can't do this anymore. And he's like, no, 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 stay, stay, stay. When we finally ended and we were turning the cars back in, my boss goes, hey, how do you feel about going back to Detroit for an extension project? I said, my kids are gonna kill me, because I told them I was coming home and taking, you know, the winter off. Well, we went up for the extension project and the kids got to come up for Thanksgiving and Christmas. So it was fun and fine. And then Apple chose to give the contract to another provider.
Yeah, I will just say that, um, the company is, it was a good company. It was a very promising experience. Um, it was really cool. The, the boys really enjoyed going up to Detroit. Uh, overall.
It's my favorite city.
Yeah, yeah, Detroit, it's amazing. I mean, we stayed in Novi, right?
We stayed in Romulus and Novi.
It's in Novi, yeah. Uh, that's where you were. And you were actually going through, just so people understand what it is that you were doing. You were driving the, the vans with all the crazy stuff on, all the cameras and everything, up and down the streets of Detroit and going, you know, all these little streets and side streets and, and all of that. And there were some, there were some frightening experiences and, and stuff like that too, right?
There were some chases. Um, when we did our regular season, we were paired with another company that drove while we did the maps. And it really is, when you see your GPS and you see that little triangle moving around, I just tracked the triangle. I was the triangle. And there had been some, depending on where you were, there were some really sketchy places where you were glad you had someone who had military experience. Because, you know, there was a guy who chased us because he was mowing a yard and he was upset we got him on camera. So I don't know whose yard he was mowing, but he was mad about that. Um, a lot of people were just worried about, you know, these vans driving by. Are they taking our credit card information? And once we had Apple Maps on it, they were a lot less worried.
Yeah, well, once they understood what, you know, what they were about, I mean, and I feel for them, because if you are, you know, sitting outside your house, you know, having a, an ice cold beer or something and you see this unmarked van come and it's going up and down the streets here with all this weird equipment on it, it's kind of sketchy, right? It's kind of sus, as Donovan would say. Um, so that kind of brings us really close to, to your, your most recent experience. You, uh, they, they gave the contract to someone else, so you were like, okay, what do I do, right?
Right. I came home and I'm like, all right, cool. I'll get unemployment for a few months and spend the time with my kids that I had. And unemployment was about 120 a week. And I went, I'll take a week off and go find my job. And I mean, it was still hard. It was still hard to find a job. How do you quantify this experience you have at the prison and in Apple Maps into something that works? And I ended up, we had gone to Louisiana on vacation and I had interviewed with a company in Balpo and hadn't heard from them. So I'm like, wow, dang, I wanted to work here. It didn't work. Okay, let's go on vacation as a family. Something was good for us to do. I came back the next day, they're like, do you want the job? I'm like, yeah, sure. And I honestly did not think I would love working in that industry. I thought it would be, honestly, and I told, you know, my coworkers, I thought this was just a six-month to a year thing to get me through to the next. I wanted to, my goal was to run a nursing home or a skilled care facility. Until I found out how hard that was and went, that's not gonna work, so.
Not even just how hard it was, because I remember the big concern was they wanted nurses. You know, that's the thing. It's, it's, you can have the same, you can have the same qualifications in a person who's not a nurse as you can with someone who's a nurse. And you get the added value of having someone with nursing experience run it. Why wouldn't you go with the nurse? So it was really hard for a non-nurse, you know, to, to get some of those positions.
Or it's a six-month unpaid internship.
Right, that was the thing.
At this point, a freshman in high school and a sixth grader? Can't afford a six-month unpaid internship. So I ended up working for helping home in Balpo for what I thought was gonna be six months to a year. It ended up being three years, which doesn't sound long, but the burnout rate for that position is two. And like, it's like a leap year. One here, it feels like seven. It, it, it takes a lot out of you, but it was probably one of the best and most rewarding jobs. But I'm like, I can't leave this industry. I can't, can't leave it. I love it. It's got my heart.
Okay, so I'm gonna break you off real quick. So people who have watched my show before and those who have mentioned, know that, that, what that entails. But people seeing for the first time may not be familiar with But people seeing for the first time may not be familiar with Help at Home.
Okay.
What is it?
Okay. So, like, the healthcare industry in general uses acronyms a lot. What I was was something called a qualified intellectual developmental disabilities professional, or a QIDP. It is sort of, when an individual, sorry, when an individual gets services, they have a budget. And in the budget, they have decided, I want a staff member, which is what I supervise. I supervise 30 individuals who had staff members. And as a Q is what they're called. You have to make sure everyone is trained properly, that you are requesting enough for your budget, that everyone is acting as they should, um, not mistreating their, their individual that they're being a staff member for. You have to make sure that you have developed risk plans that identify, so let's say this individual has problems swallowing. Well, that's a risk plan. What does staff watch out for? How does staff help them? How do they handle their food? So you have to know all the risks of every person that you work with. You need to know if they have behavioral issues and how to handle that based on a plan that's created for the individual and your training on that. So it was a lot of training, a lot of oversight, a lot of billing and budget work, and a lot of holding others accountable to what they're supposed to do. And if they're not doing what they're supposed to do, then, then you have to make sure that they are or move them elsewhere.
Right, okay. Um, so people may not be familiar with, with the terminology, so let's, let's kind of break it down for them.
Okay.
Uh, let's say that I have a disabled or intellectually, uh, developmentally disabled child, okay? There's something called services, which you referred to.
Uh huh.
What, what exactly is that? Is that Medicaid, is that?
It's something called a Medicaid waiver. So I like to explain it as you have rental insurance, renters insurance, or let's say homeowner's insurance. And homeowner's insurance covers your home, but it doesn't cover the valuables you have in your home. So you have to get a waiver for that. You have to get something that provides additional coverage that homeowner's insurance doesn't cover. When an individual who, there are various waivers out there. I only work with, well, let's say autism. When they go to the state and they get approved for their waiver, they already have Medicaid. Medicaid doesn't cover things like having a staff member or having, um, having a behavior therapist. So here comes a waiver that covers the things that Medicaid doesn't.
Right, and we're, we're talking in general, um, these aren't people that, you know, I have a bad back.
Right.
These are, these are people that legitimately need supervision in order to function, right?
Um, this is your intellectual and developmental disabilities. So cerebral palsy, autism, intellectual disabilities, that type of thing. And we make sure that they have staff and that they are treated properly and that they are getting all that they can out of the services.
I'm just gonna let people know, um, we're kind of, we're kind of chatting back and forth. We're just gonna tell you, apparently she's, uh, uh, having an issue with, she forgot to plug her computer in before she started this and the battery's draining, so, uh, go ahead and go run and grab that. I'm gonna take you off the screen and I'm just gonna talk, I'll give you, when you get, when you come back, I'll bring you back on. The plug's in another room, so, alright. Uh, so, there, you got to see my ugly closet. You'll be alright. Uh, look, the bottom line is, these people, and we, we talk about services, right? There are services, like she said, behavior therapy, physical therapy, um, case managers, people that watch out for these people, and they also have staff members. And these people are with them on a day-to-day basis. Some of them require 24-hour care, some of them only need, um, someone to be with them occasionally, uh, several hours a day, for example. There's, there's a variety of services that are provided. Uh, some of them, for very high functioning, uh, children and adults, have someone that may go with them out into the, uh, community to do things like that. Um, some of them require full-time care. There are those people who can't even, uh, take care of themselves at a rudimentary level. They can't bathe, they can't eat, they can't feed themselves, some of these people are bedridden. Uh, so she got it fixed, she's back, there she is, alright.
Alright.
So let me fix my camera back. Alright. Uh, apologize for this, this is kind of a unskinned thing. Yeah, you should be, I'm just kidding.
You're draining my battery, so.
Yeah, okay. Alright, so I kind of filled them in on, on services. So, uh, you did a much more in, in-depth thorough job than I could have, but, so you did that, how, for three years, you said, at Help at Home, which Help at Home is a company that provides these, these workers, right? The animal workers that come and work with these people. You were a supervisor, you had people that worked under you, and you would, at times, have to terminate people or hire people or, uh, write people up for things. Um, so you do have supervisory experience for, for that. But let's, let's kind of jump to, to current, after Help at Home, what happened? Why did you leave Help at Home?
I left Help at Home because it, it, healthcare industry is demanding. And in my position, I had about four or five, I can't remember off the top of my head, I want to say five, places that are called supported living sites, where staff has to be there 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Geez, whether, even if the person is asleep because of medical conditions or the level of care. There was an emergency, they couldn't get out. Well, if somebody calls off and the supervisor, me, can't find anyone to fill that shift, I have to go in. And we see it a lot more right now. Right now, the industry I'm in, it, it's, it's bleeding for staff. Uh, 15, 8, 16, $17 an hour a lot of times sign on bonuses and the people still aren't there. So my heart goes out to the, the staff now because it's even harder than it was when I was angry.
Oh yeah, it's even shorter now than it was when you were there. I, there were times that, uh, the phone would ring 12:30 AM, uh, she'd have to, the, someone, someone wouldn't show up for their shift. She'd have to grab her stuff and run out and, uh, go cover a shift and then finish that shift and show up at her office job at 8:00 AM, 9:00 AM. And then when she got off of work from that, on her way home, she's getting calls that people aren't at the next place or someone had a flat tire or someone's running late or whatever. The phone rang non-stop at that job. And I'm just gonna say, you did an amazing job keeping it together, but you left because you got a, an awesome job offer, right?
I did. As a, as a QIDP, your career paths are to weave altogether, um, to become the director of the office you're at or to become the case manager. The case manager is, I'm not gonna say the boss of the team, because that's not true. The person themselves is the boss of the team. The case manager is there to oversee every provider that is wanting money from the state to provide care for. You're there creating the budgets, looking over the budgets, making sure that they're okay. That providers are doing what they said that they would do, staffing that they said they would provide and working with them to see if there's something, if there's a problem, can you help them fix it? You're creating basically care plans. There's a much longer name for it, but it's like a care plan. It's a living document that grows with the person. And you're identifying in this care plan, mostly their strengths. What are they good at? What do they want to do? How do we make sure that they have their best life, the best future that they can have? And how do we get creative and find ways to do it?
Paula wants to tell you, congratulations on your running.
Thanks Paula.
And she wants you to know that you have shoulders of an angel.
Oh, thank you. I've never heard that before, but thank you Paula.
She does have really nice shoulders.
Pointy elbows, but really nice shoulders.
So your boss at your, at your new job is amazing.
She is.
Yeah, I, I want to say that from an outsider's perspective, she's absolutely incredible. And you said many, many times how awesome she is as a boss.
Yes.
Um, so you have now, you can, you work from home, your own schedule.
Uh huh.
That allows you the freedom to pursue this, right? You, there's no way you could run for this working at Help at Home or Sutwick or any of your other positions. It's through a series of circumstances that, you know, everything happens for a reason. And now you happen to have a job that allows you to take the time you need to campaign, but also still take care of your people. Um, because let's, let's be very clear, uh, and I, I think we're on the same page here. You're, you're gonna do everything you can to campaign for this position, but not at the cost of your people, right?
No, I'm, I'm pretty good at chunking out time, that's what I call it. Devoting certain blocks of time to certain tasks. And running is, it's a passion of mine and I do want to be commissioner. And commissioners, they have, they have flexibility in their schedule as well when they come into the office, the county. Ideally, they should be there every day. I know one that is and I know a couple that aren't. Anyway, um, I have the flexibility. I'm also, I'm a night worker. I like working at 1, 2 o'clock in the morning to get stuff done. It's quiet, the boys are, the boys, the kids in our house are asleep. And, you know, I have no problem staying up late to get something done. I have no problem waking up early to get something done. Um, and I can devote time to both positions, not at the cost of either one.
Right.
So commissioner wouldn't come at the cost of case manager, and case manager wouldn't come at the cost of commissioner.
And I think that's important for, for people to realize. Um, so you're now in a position where you're able to run for an office that not a lot of people really understand and even less put their name on the ballot for. I mean, in general, you have far more people running for US Congress and president than you do for local things like county commissioner.
Right.
Why, why, why do you think that is?
I think it comes down to people believe that the power lies at the federal level. That our federal government is what, what gives us our rights. It, it, that's not, the government does not give us anything. The federal government should be answering stuff, should understand that we are the boss. I think a lot of people think that the federal government is the be all end all, so that's where you have to go.
Right.
I am a huge proponent of, uh, I don't even know if this is the right name for it, but I call it micro politics. You have your yes, that, local is more important than ever. You have your school board. The school board is more important than people realize.
Oh, we're, yeah, that's, that's absolutely right.
That's coming out now, yeah.
That's a lot of, a lot of people, and you, you nailed it earlier when you said, yes, we were locked down for COVID. And a lot of people started paying a lot more attention to things like what your children were learning in school, uh, what, uh, what our local politicians are doing, what our moving up the chain politicians are doing. And in many cases, it's not positive, which is why I have, have stressed from the beginning, we need Americans, real, down-to-earth, salt-of-the-earth, honest-to-God, hard-working Americans to run for these offices up and down the ballot, especially down, especially down. Um, things like local and county level are so, so important.
Even something as local and simple as township board, where you work within township trustee to make sure that they have the right budget to help your little section of your town. Towns and cities are divided up into things called townships. And township trustee is what helps do things from paying your NIPSCO to funeral expense help, to all sorts of things. Something floods, that's your, that's your go-to. Well, they have a board that governs them. I didn't even know that until just recently. I didn't know what a township board was. I know what township trustee was, but not a township board. And you can start as small and as local, and that's a, a once-a-month meeting type of, of role where you can work and also be involved in, in your, your government.
That's, that's a good question, because Paula actually just, uh, put up, I think she's asking, will you leave your other job if you become commissioner?
No. I actually have already talked to my, before I even was like, I'm gonna do this, I'm, I spoke with my, my, my boss, the head boss. Um, and she won't come, she won't say that, that's not a word she uses, that she's awesome like that. But I wanted to make sure, one, that there was no conflict of interest, but two, that she knew that this, being a commissioner would not sacrifice case manager. Case manager would not sacrifice commissioner. And she gave me the go-ahead and said, there was no conflict of interest, you know, I support you, go do what you're gonna do. So, no, I wouldn't quit. Um, there may be some alterations in caseload if, if working in Lepore County does cause a conflict of interest, but no, uh, no, not at all.
And that's completely expected. I mean, you're, you're gonna be essentially part of the executive board of the county. Could that cause problems? It may be easier just to not have people from Lepore County on, on your caseload. We'll figure that out.
That's a bridge I'll, we'll cross after the general, so.
Right, right. So that's the thing, um, is a lot of people, and, and we've talked about this before, but, but newcomers to the channel, uh, new ca, newcomers who may not be familiar with you or me that are just seeing, who is this lady? Uh, primaries are so incredibly important. So here's, just so everyone knows, this is how this is gonna work. Um, she's formed her exploratory committee, she's announced her intent to run. Uh, when January comes, she will file her paperwork and she will be an official candidate on the ballot that if you live in Lepore County, she will be on your ballot if, in May, if you vote in the Republican primary.
Right.
And I would, I would really urge everyone, there are so many Republicans now in this, in this, from, from top to bottom, regardless of your political leaning, I, I really think in order to have the maximum impact on your elections, pulling our ballot, who do you want to move on to the general?
If you're a American idol, vote for your person to get to the final round. If there are two people and you really like Joe instead of Sally, then you need to go vote for Joe. And a lot of people in Indiana have an issue because you do have to declare Republican or Democrat. It's not a legally binding decision. It's okay for the next primary for you to pull another ticket.
Yeah.
There is no, there's no, oh, you pulled Democrat in 2016, that's what you are. That's, it's not how it is. A lot of people think it is, but that's not.
Yeah, and that's, that's a really good point. I'm glad you mentioned that. Um, nothing stops you from pulling a ballot for either D or R regardless of your voting history. And you do not need to be an official card-carrying member of the Republican or the Democrat Party in order to pull said ballot. Uh, a lot of people don't even think about elections until November comes around and we have, you know, the, the general election. Uh, voting in the primary is arguably just as, if not more important than voting in the general because, for example, my race for Congress, there were six people on the ballot. Um, there, there was a, there were a lot of people. And we had less than the Democrats did. There were like, what, like nine, 13?
I wanna say like 11.
Yeah, there were a bunch of people on the D side.
It was a lot, it was a lot.
Yeah, so the people that ended up facing off Frank Murvan and Mark Leva were the ones picked because people went and pulled the ballot and they voted for who they wanted to see in the general election. Um, there is a lot of power in that vote. There is a lot of power in that vote. There's a lot of power, because if you pick someone in the primary that is essentially unelectable and will not win against whomever from the other side, then you've essentially given that race to the other side. We're not even gonna make it D or R, just who, you know, whichever side. And, and Paula says, oh, MAGA Matt would like, NWI Times ran an article about CPI, so it means Crown Point Schools, not teaching CRT. And the reactions were a thousand to one, like, love, care, too angry. I think that I speak for the vast majority of Republicans at minimum, and I personally believe the vast majority of Americans in general that are opposed to CRT teachings, especially in our lower-level schools. It's, it's a college-level course that's very involved in legalese, and it's been around for a long time.
It's actually a law school subject, to simply teach future lawyers how to look at a law and apply it to different racial categories for your client. Taught in law school by lawyers who understand this. And now it's being filtered down to teachers that whether they, they want to teach it or want to teach it differently, they, they're not given that freedom. I don't like it because I feel like it, it's teaching people that they are less simply because of who they are. That, or that they are, because of who they are, they are guilty, or because of who they are, they need help. And I, I don't like that. We can all achieve what we want. And to teach someone from, from the get-go that they're less because that's what they are, I don't, I don't like that.
Right, right, and, and it applies across the entire spectrum. We're not gonna get, we're not gonna get too wrapped up in that. But I think a lot of people will be glad to hear, oh, well, there, there are a couple of things that I wanna, that I wanna ask you definitively. Number one, are you for bigger or smaller government in general?
Smaller.
Okay, do you believe that people should have the right? Because one of the things that the, um, county commissioners are responsible for, especially in today's day and age, are mask mandates. Because with the, the recent changes, it's now upon the county commissioners to determine mask mandates rather than the Health Department. The, the county commissioners have the final say-so on that. We're not gonna get too deep into, into any of that, because it really doesn't matter. But let me ask you this. In general, and obviously there are exceptions to every rule, there are some things that are just gonna need to happen. But in general, it's my understanding that you respect people's right to choose what is best for themselves and their family, is that correct?
Right. As, as county commissioner, I need to make sure that the resources are there on both sides of the spectrum for those who want it. It's all personal choice. I choose to go and get the COVID shot, the vaccine. That's my choice. And as a commissioner, I need to make sure that the people who want that have access to that. I need to also make sure that the people who do not want this are not forced, still have the information in case they change their mind. But for me, I'm not big on this whole, let's, let's make fun of judge, punish people for a choice. I'm not, I don't like that.
And you and I have had, you know, obviously, hours and hours and hours of discussion about this, and we'll revisit this, this won't be the only review that we do. But I think it's important to understand that your voice, not, not you Liz, but you viewer, your voice can be far more influential than you think it can. Your vote can be far more influential than you think it can. It is absolutely critical, looking at what is happening in this country on federal, down to city and township levels, that you vote. That you get out there and you vote. Now, I personally, I'm for all 50 states, let's audit them, let's find out exactly what happened. But you don't even have to speak to that, because ultimately, the legislatures are going to do what they're going to do. We, the citizen, if we do not believe that our votes matter, then all is lost. We have to believe that, and I'm, I saw the power of the people, because I, I had no political experience, nobody had heard of me, I'm just a guy. I've done some things, I've said some things, I've, you know, had expertise in some areas, and I went up against a well-established, very well-known politician from Michigan City making this close. First time out the box. It's doable, people, it's absolutely doable. And, and I have every intention of doing it again. This is not an official announcement or anything, but it, it really, really inspired me to, to show and tell people, I mean, I'm gonna be doing videos to teach you how to get on the ballot, to teach you what you can do to make these changes. And I'm, I'm not trying to hijack your, hijack your video here.
It's your show, go for it.
But I think all of us really are starting to understand that we have to get involved, we have to pay attention to our, our school board meetings, our commissioner meetings, our council meetings. All of these things are absolutely important. Some would argue even more important than what you're gonna see on C-SPAN, even more important than, than what's going on in the White House right now. These people, the people that are in your county government, your city government, your school boards, they are going to have a far more direct effect on your day-to-day lives than anyone who occupies the Oval Office.
Right. Like your county, you could have a local office that decides breed bans. You know, we're not gonna have pit bulls in this county, we're not gonna have, we're not gonna allow Dobermans in this city, we're not gonna allow you to make noise in the town after nine o'clock at night. Those kind of real-world decisions that impact you. That's why it's important to get involved, because you have that vo, vote, you have that voice. And to support your candidate, and it can be done beyond signs and T-shirts. And you look to the congressional race. McDermott outsigned everyone. There is no doubt, good or bad, he outsigned everybody. But signs, don't vote, people do. He outraised, the last I heard is he raised more money than any Democrat candidate. And spent more, but he didn't win, because dollars don't vote, people do.
I mean, and, and all the way from there to all the way at the top, I mean, Hillary Clinton in 2016 outspent Trump almost two to one, in my understanding. Uh, I mean, just vastly outspent the Trump campaign, and we see how that turned out.
And they don't have to be big donations. You don't have to donate a thousand dollars to help a candidate. Twenty dollars helps, five dollars helps, but your voice, your voice, you campaigning for your candidate helps more than you can even know.
Oh yeah, I will say this, um, the reason that I did so well in, in my election, yeah, it had a lot to do with you, I will admit that, yes, thank you. But a lot was people sharing content, people telling other people, hey, check this guy out, hey, have you seen what he's saying? And that's going to be even more important with this, with your race, because A, it's the primary, and B, anyone who's running is relatively unknown. Unless they're a sitting politician already, they're, they're just another name. So who are you? That's why it's important to have, you know, interviews like this, so that people can get to know who you are and, and understand what they're kinda getting themselves into. Without calling out any names, because it's not time for that, what is one of your biggest issues that you see with the county commissioners right now as far as the, like, the overriding thing that you're like, that's gotta change?
I think there's two that are pretty done on. One is I believe that you should be able to go to your commissioner board and say, hey, I don't think you're doing a good job, I don't like this. Now, of course, respectfully, not threatening, no screaming. We can be adults and say, I disagree, I think you're doing a horrible job in managing the Health Department. And here's why I think that. And we should be able, the commissioners, should be able to sit there and listen and learn from it. Because everybody's issues are teachable moment. How do you get better if you don't take the good and the bad? Right now, that's not going on. Right now, it's, you can't, you can't question us, you can't point out our flaws. We only want good. How do you grow if you don't know what the flaws are? So I would change that daily. Another thing I have is I have never once been an employee where I could just go to my boss and go, hey, I worked 40 hours, pay me. Don't, don't ask what I did, I'm not gonna tell you what I did, just pay me. We have that going on. We have people who are billing the county for work for 10 hours, five hours, 12 hours. We don't know what they're doing, and they're getting paid for that. That's money that could go elsewhere to help our county in so many different ways. Less potholes, sidewalks, broadband, the list could go on, it could be anything and everything.
Well, one, one exact, uh, or I should say, one particular thing that is now becoming a crisis is rate of pay for EMS and paramedics and, uh, our police officers, law enforcement in general, is, is lower than surrounding counties. So if you can, like, like people, for example, let's say you live in Westville, you can work for the county sheriff here, or you can work in Porter County, just make that little bitty drive and make far more money. Who are you? People have to pick what's best for their families. That's an example of where that money could go.
Right, also, there are individuals who are sitting on multiple boards and committees outside of what they're supposed to be doing, and getting paid three or four different paychecks. I've never heard of any employee being able to do that. It doesn't make sense. It costs us money, money that could go to the corner budgets, to IT. I know that the county IT department just lost some people. It could go to, to retain better benefits, so many, so many different things.
I mean, there's no shortage of ways to, to spend money that we're right now just throwing away. So, kinda, kinda wrap up here, we're at an hour, we're gonna, we're gonna just wrap up here. One thing that I see is I see commissioners that are on various boards or various liaisons that have no experience in that area. For example, um, community corrections, I believe, you should have some knowledge of corrections, you know? You don't have to have been law enforcement, but you should have some general knowledge of corrections, some sort of something to tie it together. And right now, there's, there's none of that. You have a healthcare degree, um, you have, uh, experience as a correctional officer at a maximum security prison, you have supervisor experience. In my opinion, you are very, very well-qualified to be a county commissioner. Obviously, I'm a little biased, because I'm your husband, but, you know. I, I will call that out. But ultimately, it's hard to argue with the fact that you have experience in, in various areas, and more experience than many of the people, and, and forget about just commissioner, many of the people in government from top to bottom are far less qualified for their positions than you. So, I'd just like to say on behalf of everyone, I think, congratulations on mustering up the courage to put your name on the ballot, as you saw from me. It's, it, it's a tough choice, it's a hard thing to, to finally make that decision and go, you know what, I'm gonna do this, I'm tired of watching from the sidelines, I'm tired of complaining about it, I'm tired of trying to figure out which candidate is telling the truth. So I'm just gonna put myself out there. It takes, it takes a lot of, a lot of hoo-spah, um, a lot of gumption to, to go after it. And, hey, hey, well done, well done. Regardless of how anything works out, at least your name was on the ballot.
But we, you know, you gotta take chances, or you're not gonna win. And this next six months is a learning process. I wanna learn as much as I can about everything that I can. From ditch issues to Rains of Life, the charity in Michigan City that works with equine therapy, to, I don't have any highway signs, to hiring, and here's what I think the problems are with county hiring, pastors, community leaders, elected officials, I just wanna learn. Even if I, even if I, God forbid, don't make it past the primary, I know it's better if we were in residence. It's like, learn from, and I learn from others.
Right, and, and that's absolutely critical, because ultimately, people need to understand that these people work for us. The, the, the elected officials, politicians, they work for us. And you already have that, that mindset, which in my opinion, puts your head and shoulders above, uh, certain others. But more importantly, you are willing to get out there and, and meet people and learn what they need, what is, what they feel is best for them, and, and give you knowledge that you wouldn't otherwise have. For example, you know, road signs or ditches. Nobody goes into that knowing everything about that. So, yeah, ab- absolutely. Dave says, uh, he may have to move to Lepore County just for us.
No, it's a great county, seriously.
It really is, it really is. Lepore County's awesome. Right, we, yeah, we know a couple of Realtors. So, I think we're gonna, I think we're gonna wrap it up. And, uh, thanks, obviously, for coming on the show, I appreciate it, they appreciate it. It's, it's not your only, uh, it's not your only appearance. We'll have, uh, more, more in-depth about each subject later on down the road.
And I'm, I'm sure I'll be appearing, you know, when you announce. As your biggest supporter, just like Cameron.
Right, exactly. Listen, to everyone watching, thank you for joining us. To, to people who weren't able to catch us live, if you have questions that you would like her to, to answer, if you wanna know her stance on things, if you have something that you even just wanna run by her, look her up on Facebook, um, it's, it's Liz for Lepore County. And her DMs are open. Let her know, you know, hey, uh, I wanna know what you think about this, I wanna know what you think about that. If, if you would like an opportunity to ask her questions, pay attention to, uh, Dion's Daily Dose, my Facebook page, where I'll let you know in advance when she's gonna be on. This time, it wasn't quite as much advance notice as I'd like to give, uh, just because of the way her personal things happen. Yeah, uh, kinda, look, ultimately, our, our hand was, well, at least her hand was kinda forced because of some stuff that, that happened that, you know, kinda put her on the spot, and she had to make a quick decision, yeah, I'm gonna do this. We weren't intending for it to go quite this way, a little bit more time, but it's okay. Next time, you'll have more, uh, you'll have more notice that she's gonna be on the show.
And I'm gonna be around this weekend, um, the Lepore County Blues Fest is happening. There's a fellowship fest at the Lepore County Fairgrounds that's going on, that's free. Um, there is an all-you-can-eat pancake breakfast, which our 15-year-old is just so excited about. And, I mean, pancakes, so if you've seen me there, I'll probably be in a bright green shirt, say hi. I'd love to talk to people.
Yeah, yeah, don't be shy, come up, talk to us, anyone who, uh, you know, anyone who's met us in previous, uh, campaign season knows, we're very approachable, we're right here for you, we're just like you. We're, we're not, uh, you know, we don't live in a big, big house in, in Potawatomi Park or Valentine Court or Long Beach. You know, we, we live in regular old Michigan City, we're, we're just like you are. Hang out with us, chat with us, ask us whatever questions you want. She's, again, Liz Bergeron, running for county commissioner, and we're a power couple, what can I say? I'm just kidding about that, bud. Yeah, oh yeah, uh, Maga Matt, uh, there's a lefty workers' rights attorney that has Liz for Indiana already. I saw that after, uh, 'cause I was like, you should do Liz for Indiana, like Dion for Indiana. And I saw that, uh, there was someone who, who had that and she is very, uh, very left.
I don't know that. I'm married into the Bergeron clan, I don't know who she is.
Yeah, we, we don't know. But, uh, thank you very much for, for joining me, my beautiful wife. And, uh, we will, we will have you on again. For those of you who did not get a chance to watch her, that are watching this later, not live, uh, reach out to her, uh, you can reach out to me, send me an email, send her an email. Let me, uh, let me actually put your, uh, your email out there. It's just yourname@protonmail.com, right?
Yeah.
For the campaign, right? Okay. Here, let me, uh, let me.
Facebook is honestly probably the quickest way to reach me and I get back to everyone. I'm not quite as fast as Dion is. Dion is pretty dang fast at responding on Facebook. I tried to devote the beginning of the day to my case manager job and then the rest of the day, trying to even it out. But, um, yeah, I'll get back to you, promise.
Let me get this, uh, let me get this banner up. Again, I intended to have all this done, but that's okay. There you go. Take that, want to, uh, if you wanna email her directly, but really, like she said, look up Liz for, uh, Lepore County on Facebook. Send her a message, she's more than happy to, to answer questions. And look, she doesn't have a, a, um, a team that filters through the stuff and picks politically correct answers to give you. It's just her, it's, it's her and me and we're gonna, we're gonna make sure that your voices are heard, that what you want happens. Because I don't know about you, but I feel very, very disenfranchised. I feel like their, like, like government from top to bottom has become its own entity. This, uh, hold on, her Lepore County page doesn't have the option to invite. It doesn't, it won't let you like, uh, it won't let you message her. I'll have to dig into it and make sure I fix it. We'll put some work into it. Again, this is very early. Uh, email her if, if for some reason that you can't message on that. We'll make sure we, we make sure we get all this out straight now. It's still, it's still kinda early, but we did wanna let you know what she's.
And if you ask me a question I don't know, I will let you know and then I will, I, I'm a huge researcher, I love it. I'll look into it and let you know, so. Cause there's so much to learn and there's so much that, right now, I'm just figuring it all out and going to be as honest and transparent as I can.
Yeah, we were, we were having that issue earlier as well. Um, for some reason, we weren't able to invite people to like the page. We're trying to work on that, there, there are several things that, uh, may be happening with the page. Uh, she kinda set it up on her own, uh, for the most part. And then I was like, okay, why'd you do that and that? But it's okay, we'll get it figured out. Let's put it this way, Facebook may not be her strong suit. Uh, setting up a new page on Facebook may not be her strong suit, but taking care of her people and by, by that definition, the people of Lepore County are absolutely her, her, uh, specialty. So, uh, thanks everybody for, for coming out, thank you for joining me, um, as always. And God bless you, God bless Indiana, and God bless the United States of America, right? Good night, everybody.